Is there some reason to change the letterhead?
Yeah, it was a number different.
Should have ever done that with the letterhead before. I don't know, or the city agencies. You like, I use the staff going here. And not here.
I mean, I think that this was a replacement for. I remember the problem. But I don't, I don't think that. If it's new, the letterhead would have a director underneath it, or does that predate any?
Susan had letterhead.
Like this? I don't think, what we say underneath the top banner? Or running on the left?
Yeah, I remember that we had to replace it when I was really tired because it had Susan's.
Yeah, I usually change the staff down on my left.
We can figure.
No, I mean, if there's a question, it just could be the first time I've seen it.
Yeah, we did. Yeah. We have a graphic for them to move everything around.
I have one on the left, I have one floating up there.
I mean, I don't even know that whose needs are there.
Yeah.
Who could just have the library of the address?
Think about it, just.
And look up the one we sent last year.
You see, well, last year we just missed it. Okay, this is a smaller letter and so forth. I remember that that common pattern.
Did we?
It was exactly the same on last.
Was it? I just missed it.
But, again.
It's me.
I'm not went through at all. Um.
I don't think anybody's.
I'm not like, it's a beer green. It's just like a format. I didn't ever see. But it must have gotten right past. I wonder if we. Reviewed the draft in a raw form and not in letter. And it could be that I just wasn't. Tuned into it.
I think we also have a smaller. Like a, it's a smaller footprint one that has. The logo.
Does that size cause you issues sometimes?
I think there's one that doesn't have the direct.
Yeah, I'm sure there is. Uh, cause if I'm signing it, I usually use the one that does.
Oh, that doesn't?
Yeah, because I figured my name is there, so.
Yeah, I don't know. I don't know with the common pattern.
We have like a whole file of letterheads.
Something should have, yeah. A policy doc, Rob. Yeah, I guess. Now I'll be looking at different letterheads and saying, I never noticed. You're probably right. I probably just was not.
I mean, another question would be, does it need to have fax somewhere over? Well, actually.
Do we have a fax?
No, but do we use?
Two faxes from your Janos.
Oh, wow.
We've removed the fax smaller from our numbers at the university. It's just like. Cause most people don't know where the fax machine is to go get the document. Feeling okay? James, basically as well. But they don't just.
A friend. Second, that was trans probably about yours. I don't understand how it's.
You have to find where in the building they're still about. Tired he said rarities.
There's one of those websites I didn't want to do the public on the safe. But we have.
I could see you having one here because it could be someone in the community that backs something and they don't know where to find the fax machine anymore.
Yeah. Hello. How is it out there? It's getting a little colder.
It is chilly.
It's supposed to be forty five degrees out, so I'm a little disappointed.
It doesn't, it doesn't feel like thirty degrees. Certainly is not that nice out.
You know, it's great.
So did I sleep on it.
The letter team.
You are kind of not same. It's gonna take down Christmas sacrifices. There's no love. They're not the only ones.
That's how we know you're a parent.
Yeah, how do you explain when minors tomorrow? Actually, I think maybe they come down this weekend. I haven't looked. I was out of town. I was told they came down.
For parents. Yeah.
The, the Christmas.
All the Christmas lights.
I didn't even bother doing lights, but there are some big trees out.
Oh, Ellsworth, I didn't say in our last meeting, I have a friend up in Marion that I guess uh ma- made your acquaintance of. Ben.
Yeah.
He wanted to say that he's super jealous that you're here and he wish you, wishes you would come back.
Oh.
Okay. Uh, no, I'm, I'm friends with, uh, yes, same guy, sorry.
Who lived in like, wouldn't have the crazy experience with the tornado.
Mm-hmm.
He went into a closet with his then girlfriend. And when he came out of the closet, his roof was gone. And he was covered in mud.
Oh, my gosh.
Yep.
I was like. Are you doing that? He's like, oh, just live through.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I was at nine twenty nine Iowa when it happened and that was a real fun next block. Yeah, I had a great time. It was.
Yeah. He wanted. And had a few drinks and came out and then it realized the tornado went through town.
Well, and that happened to us because I think it was. Like Friday, maybe it was a.
It was.
Yep.
Cause my daughter. And her boyfriend were visiting us for dinner and we live over near Lucas. And we had, you hear the, heard the siren. We had no idea. Well, then they left us to drive. Home to their apartment. And it took him like an hour and a half to get from our house to Iowa Avenue. Because everything went, we had no clue.
Oh, yeah.
We were like. Two miles away. It was very strange.
Proudly sneaking past the National Guard to get into an apartment above Whitey so we could all have some beers and.
I think I'll go ahead and call the meeting orders. On that note. It was a wild weekend. Since all board members are here and it is four o'clock. Um. First of all, we need to approve the agenda. Can't imagine there's much that needs to be changed, but. Got any?
I'm going to approve the agenda.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oh.
It is recording.
We're recording. He, he said, we're recording.
Recording, okay.
Um. Uh, we don't have any public here that I've. Notice. Um, so we only have one agenda item and that is to review and hopefully adopt. The Board of Trustees' Statement Concerning State Legislation Ramifications for Public Libraries. Um, if you. Have everybody been here long enough to read it? Okay. Um. I will open then for discussion or comments or.
I had a few notes of intent I'd like to go over.
Okay.
Um. So for starters, we did start with, uh. Uh, the draft that we, we sent last year uh in a somewhat similar vein. Um, the main intention of this is to confront. The uh reorganization bills. We had a little bit of back and forth on whether or not. We wanted to uh involve other bills that are currently under consideration and chose rather to focus very tightly on. The two bills under consideration right now. Um. We're also pushing to get this at, uh, focus on brevity on here. Obviously. It's gotten larger, but um that was, that's our intent. Uh, so if you see areas where you feel like we can tighten it up. Our main intent there is we want it to um pop as much as we can. So if there's any fat to trim, let us know. We'd be happy to, but. Big part. And tremendous, tremendous thanks to Claire and Ann because without. I, I wrote this out and uh they helped so much with, with. Making this make more sense than it originally did in all things. And thank you for the permission on it. Completely appreciate it.
I will second that. We just felt that the shorter the better. There's so much coming out. And then also. I guess I had a thought that maybe I didn't. We didn't really talk after we got it finished, but there was a recent statement from the ILA. About intellectual freedom in Iowa and it might be worthwhile to add a brief. Nod to their statement. Um, I don't think that we to, we already made a statement on intellectual freedom and how we stand last year. It's still the same comment. So I guess I we kind of. Decided to spear it specifically towards this restructuring, which is a kind of an unknown. Problem. People aren't going to be as. Polar or um aware. It's not in the news. It's not, it's not quite as out there as the intellectual freedom challenges are. That was kind of our decision making there, but.
Can you tell us your targeted distribution for this? Who are you writing to?
Our intent is to get it to uh. Uh, newspapers, particularly.
So public.
In general, public, I think.
Okay.
So we'd happily take comments to that. I think it's really easy for us to be um that intellectual ideal. And so any simple reason or. As Ann said, it's just one of those things that you can't really explain in a sentence or two. You know, it's just not. Like int- intellectual freedom, I think is a bigger idea to uh. Easier to explain shortly and um this isn't necessarily.
Well, and intellectual freedom, I mean, it's more. Uh. It's something that's in, in. More in the news, more, you know, people feel one way or the other about it because we're always hearing stories about banned books and this and that. So.
That's kind of a passionate topic.
You know, I know.
Hopefully, hopefully the statement does get it.
Having been a state employee. When they were. Sending all kinds of stuff and all kinds of rules to the Department of Administrative Services and sort of being a victim of that. Um. I could, it's really important. I, I, I need you to explain to me. The last sentence and the next to the last. Paragraph because I. I, I don't quite, I don't quite under- I don't understand what it's saying. Why is that the case?
Your accreditation.
Yeah.
Yeah. So the intent there is we. If our accreditation becomes, if, if we get to a point where we are at an impasse between. Living our values of, of. Allowing our library to ma- remain open versus um. And this is me paraphrasing and this is my own words, uh kowtowing to um what. Political pointies at the state level would um intend us to operate. We uh, we may need to entertain uh our standing with accreditation.
So in, in other words, it could be a situation in which. I had the same question, in which we would not seek accreditation in the state because.
Potentially.
So it would require us to do things we shouldn't have.
Truly.
And it could be in conflict.
Exactly.
With the library ethics.
Exactly.
At national level.
We would literally have to choose between our ethics and remaining accredited.
And it might be that we just maybe need to re- is that to make that more clear a little bit, which is possible. We could potentially.
I'm gonna. Float the idea that. For the public, we could leave it out because they don't know what accreditation is or why it's valuable or. What that conflict would look like. And so it would take a page.
To understand it does. I do think, well, first of all. The sentence itself, if you and I, and I'm not saying that we're the only ones that, you know, don't quite understand the. Where it's going. That's a bit of an issue. I would guess that. A large portion of our public. Doesn't even know that. Public libraries are accredited institutions. I mean.
Right.
So.
And even if there is, I could.
I mean, I, I think that the. The point that you're trying to get across is. Extremely important. I don't know if you can be brief and also get it across.
You can almost just say that all of those. Aspects, right? Federal funds, training and accreditation should be free from political. Yeah, I mean, you, you get it out in the final paragraph, but. If you wanted a one last sentence in that paragraph, just say, you know, these are all. Vital services that should be free from. Political. Interference. Yeah, influence.
I think it's bigger than that. I think it needs to stay in there because this um should issue. Uh, it's more immediate. This really could be a conflict coming. Between the library and the state. And I think in Iowa City, many people do understand this accreditation. This is just not. Theoretical. This could play out very soon. Um, and we could get into this discussion of accreditation not being cons- the, the. Lack of accreditation not being consistent. With the national guidelines for libraries. Um, so I, and I think Iowa City will understand this. That's one reason I was asking the targeted audience. For those who don't, they may go through it, but. I would prefer it be retained. I, I don't think this is theoretical.
But I don't think Iowa City. Audience, right?
What if we just raise, rephrase that instead of moving forward, but we just say weigh the value of their state library at accreditation against. Um, national library values.
Against.
Or standards.
Or against national library standards.
What's accreditation do for us?
So accreditation makes it so we can do things like interlibrary loan. We do receive some funding. Um. Can't remember and. You know it off the top of your head.
Yeah, we receive funding to state, which is distributed by the federal government. We also are able to participate in reciprocal bartering and also, which means that anybody in Iowa City can get a library card and call home, vice versa. Um, and then we can.
It's, it's a national standard. So it's participation on a national level.
Mm-hmm.
That you need to be accredited.
Yeah. We'd also lose the ability uh to uh let schoolchildren check out books through us. Well.
Go through their.
Through the school.
Yeah.
Through the hand card.
I think it's also the, the backbone of when we make an intellectual freedom argument as an institution. We need to say this, this accreditation is connected to this. Um, if we lose, if we lose accreditation, we no longer have. Real standing on intellectual freedom. We have a philosophical standard. But we don't have an operational standard to say this is the norm.
But to become accredited, we give the state lots of data.
Yeah, I data.
What we do, who we serve, how we serve.
Who we have all the way.
Our operational standards, you know, number of. People with X degree versus Y degree. Um. So the, in theory, the state could add into that things like. You can't reach tier three accreditation unless you filter your internet. Or unless you restrict. Um, materials that have. Critical race theory related content to users over eighteen. And things like that. So that's part of the threat is that if accreditation handles all things that are valued for lineless. It would be a hard decision because being not accredited in current setup would be losing all the things that.
But it affects our money. Right?
Yes. It would. It would be very hard to press. If we had to give it up.
Okay.
Very difficult.
So we're gonna need the line.
That's the question.
I moved to like rephrase the last two words. So against national library standards because then we're comparing the value of our accreditation. Like what are we weighing the value of it? Against.
Um, we change national to core.
Yeah. That's what I would.
National, what?
That's interesting.
Core, or library values.
Oh. That.
Or core values.
That gets added. It makes it much better without really calling it an intellectual freedom. Issue which you've already intentionally not tried to. Put in, so.
Yeah.
I think it's a very forceful. Uh, argument. I think that sentence, I don't think people understand what accreditation is. So I think it's a red herring here.
Okay.
And I think it's better to get rid of it because it's not essential in the argument at all. Uh. And, and not especially coming so near to the end. People read it and say, I don't know what that means.
Yes, it's, and, and that's, that was the difficult part because I feel like it, I wanted to have it hang out there as. I don't want to use the word. Threat, but. Find out what happens when you limit our hand is. Was my intent with that statement and I wanted that to be directed at lawmakers.
They might not care. They might be happy to make governments smaller.
I don't doubt that. At the four, you know.
Yeah. What if we keep the intent of that sentence, but just take accreditation out? So something like it will put libraries in a difficult position of weighing their.
Relationship to state.
Relationship to state, I have government or relationship to state.
State library.
Their state.
I worry about the inference there. What do you think? Sorry, I'm, I'm sorry.
And still find John because she. I think she's trying to suggest something like accreditation, which is necessary for state funding. Because this woman maybe asked why they don't go to state funding. And because it's in the lining of their own values. She's doing a great job.
That's interesting.
I think that could, I think that might be a threat.
That could be persuasive.
Right, and that makes that connection for people that don't even know what accreditation is. Something that. Gets you to funding.
Yeah. Yeah, in place the word accreditation, we just say funding. That's what you're thinking. State.
State support, so.
Support.
I support that. I think that that's what the public is concerned about, I'm sure, among other things, of course, but funding is important.
Mm-hmm.
Taxpayers understand that.
Yep. And you do have the term accreditation in previous sentence. So, you know, people who do really. Know what that is or.
Good call.
I like it. Yep.
Okay.
Gotta hammer home the money. That's what people are interested in.
What's it play? Money and.
So um, this is, and I, I don't know, um, reorganization of bills, SSB should just be SB or is it SSB?
It's S, it's SSB according to their documentation.
Okay.
Senate study.
Oh, Senate study bill, okay.
We're using their direct.
Okay.
Line.
Do we need to add proposed reorganization bills or is that implied?
We, we talked about that. We talked about that directly on, on how, how we wanted to. Um. Choose how, how the voice is going to be active voice. Um, and. I think what we landed on was. We want to press that this is coming. Um. And if it's not now. These are where the intentions lie. Um, so I think the active voice, I think is important, um, because I don't want to downplay the risk that they are taking.
And the bills is just accurate because they are bills before.
There we are. And they seem to be moving fast with lots of support. Is the other piece. There seems to be no real. Conflicting voices except for a few libraries and. The School for the Blind. And deaf. And like, that's really who's speaking out against it. Everybody else seems to be thinking that this is going to be a big money saver. Um, without. At least according to what I was listening to on NPR today, but. I didn't do my own research. I left it to NPR.
Okay.
Do we know if other libraries are. Doing. Statements like this, other local libraries?
I have not heard of anyone local.
Which are.
Too bad because.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, we have a lot of, of, of good faith that uh, at the Gazette who just ran this big article on how wonderful libraries are. New York Times has also run one recently. And uh, so that if the other libraries were doing something like this, it would become a story for a. Newspaper.
Yeah.
While it's probably not, couldn't be a story for a newspaper, it's just us.
Yeah. Having that additional context could help where we'd say. Got Marion, Cedar Rapids, Iowa City.
I mean, depending on how you feel about the timeline, we could engage those libraries in. The conversation. They maybe haven't. Thought about it or have, you know, haven't had an interest to, to take the action. If we want it for tomorrow. That probably won't happen, but.
I'm not saying we should sign on with them, but we do encourage them, you know, to share this with them and say, hey, this is what we're saying.
Yeah. And maybe advocacy day is a great venue for that, that has it ready for tomorrow for advocacy day where we're meeting with other librarians around the state.
Right.
When the last statement from the board came out. Uh, multiple other libraries on a national level. Followed with similar statements, you know. Fairly.
So we're. Largely leading edge on these things. So when others see it.
Such a shameless power grab. I mean, it's. It's turning this, the state into a totalitarian.
Yeah.
Right, genius. It's just awful.
They found the instructions from ninety years ago.
Yep, from what I'm hearing, it's because then the governor's office can have more control of salaries. Is a big chunk of this reorganizational bill. Or. Projected intent or maybe not intent, maybe intent, but definitely a. A, a significant piece of the. Repercussions of it will be that the governor's office will have a whole. And also the attorney general will have a whole lot of more control over. Salaries and their entire. Structures.
And opinions.
Yeah. It's the state librarian now they report to a board. Does the board hire and fire? Or.
Right now, yeah.
So like Department of Administrative Services couldn't dismiss a state librarian without cause.
Not now. Nothing could get rid of the board, though.
And they've had vacancies on that board for a long time because she's refusing to fill them. For years.
Yeah.
Just saying, there's a lot of applicants and she will not fill those vacancies. So I don't know how long that board's gonna sit there.
Well.
It looks like DAS, I think the board is going.
Yeah.
Yeah.
He's advisor.
Yeah.
That's true. It could become advisory and uh advisory, yeah.
And it eliminates all of the, um.
There's no power.
Yeah, credentials on being here.
And they're also supported, they're also appointed by the government. They're political appointment.
Yeah.
On that board.
Yeah. Or not.
Or not.
And then they might have to jump into this to the store where they're required to have one person.
Right. However, those are the, the seats that have remained empty for a very long time.
At least figured out how to undermine the bipartisan.
People register as independents.
Okay. Uh, more discussion, more suggestions?
Everybody. Everybody. We still plan, hoping to have this. Available for tomorrow.
Yeah. I think so. I mean, I think that was the whole point, right? Right.
Yeah. Thank you all for your work on.
Yes.
Really, really good job.
So. Sounds to me like we only amended that one sentence. Is that right?
Yeah.
So do we have a motion? To approve this letter, the draft?
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye. Yeah.
Okay. So again, I, I just ask for clarification. It goes out to the local media. And then, or is the staff sending it or we? How is this being distributed and where's it going?
I think those libraries, I would say a similar channel to our last.
Yeah.
Distribution, but I hope, I don't know that it will have the same impact since it isn't. Um. About intellectual freedom, but. I don't. In the same menu.
Send it to last time, was it?
Register and.
I believe.
It should go to the Gazette.
And I think that the city published it. City published our letter. Before.
Did we do a press release for last week?
I would do a press release because I think. You know, we've ever done the um deaf and blind stories for NPR, for example, obviously we'll.
Right.
See this and, you know. See that connection. And that we are, we have similar concerns.
Yeah.
So do you as a committee send it out? Does the staff send it out? Or does this move tomorrow? Okay, just, just make sure they stop them because we're at a deadline here.
Yeah. Yeah, because this was the whole river to river. Conversation today on my lunch hour was, was really about. This bill. And a couple, a couple other things, but um this was a large chunk of NPR or um IPR today.
Of course, it was supposed to be like all the bills that survived the funnel, right?
It was going through, it was, I didn't, I wasn't, I wasn't listening to a regular show, but um. This was a big chunk of what I was listening to. Yeah.
It would be a lot. I, I haven't listened, but I still can. Okay, um. Anybody else want to chime in with anything before we adjourn? Anybody else want to chime in with anything before we adjourn?
Just double checking. I didn't hear back from anybody who wanted to ride along.
I'll be in Des Moines tomorrow.
How many people are going from here?
Four.
Four or five.
Yeah, four or five. I got a few things.
Well, I think you did a great job and I really appreciate the willingness to step up and. Do this.
Absolutely.
Thanks. Thank you for coming. You know, fighting the good fight. You're getting beaten down, but you're fighting.
Doing it. Okay, I think then I will adjourn the meeting.
Thank you.